Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Councilmember Shrubneck.
Here.
Mayor Baker.
Excused.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
All right, now if you all please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, equal and free to every and every for all. Next item on the agenda is the agenda approval. Are there any objections to approving the agenda as published? Okay, hearing none, agenda's approved. Next item is citizen comments. It's your opportunity to express your views on issues that are important to you and the community. I will point out that we do have a public hearing on the tax levy immediately following this. So if you're here to speak on the tax levy, I would encourage you to make your comments at that point. But if you want to speak about anything else, this is your time. Do we have anybody on the list?
Nobody signed up.
Does anybody wish to be heard? Anybody wish to be heard? Okay. We're going to move on to the public hearing. This is for proposed tax levy for 2019. Joanne Gregory, Finance Administration Director.
Let me pull up my presentation. Okay, thank you very much. So tonight, we're holding a public hearing for the purpose of setting the 2019 property tax levy and to walk you through the computations of the proposed levy and what the levy rate may be, and also to illustrate how we set the excess tax levy to pay for the walkways and waterways bonds. Some key dates to keep in mind, after tonight, we'll have another meeting next Tuesday after the holiday, and there will be a public hearing on the 2019-2020 proposed budget. I'll also bring proposed budget adjustments for the 2017-2018 current budget to you for review. It's really important that none of the funds exceed their appropriation level when we close the books on 2018. And if all proceeds as planned, the following week, November 19th, will be the meeting where you will be asked to adopt the tax levies and the 2019-2020 budget. And then the budget amendments will be brought back on November 26th for your approval. And in regard to the tax levies, our deadline is the end of the month, as the King County Tax Assessor requires the tax levy ordinances by the 1st of December in order to set the property tax bills. So every year, as you know, the council has to set the levy for the coming year and decide whether or not there will be an increase over and above the effect of new construction on the tax rolls. The increase is limited by the implicit price deflator, which we call the IPD, which is personal consumption expenditures, or 1%, whichever is lower. And generally, the IPD is higher than the 1%. Lately, with inflationary pressures on the rise, the IPD for determining the allowable increase this year is 2.169. So that exceeds the 1% limitation, and 1% then is your cap. But in this upcoming year and the new budget, we are recommending an increase of 3% using available bank tax capacity from prior years when no levy increase was taken. We have about $752,000 in bank capacity, according to the most recent value from the King County Assessor. So I'm going to just walk you through the computation of the levy and how that impacts the rate that will result in assessing the properties over the next year. So you begin with the calculation using last year's tax levy, which was the $4,837,000. And you determine, okay, what's lower, 1% or the IPD, and this year, 1% is lower. So you would then increase, calculate the increase of 1% of the tax levy, or in our case, with the recommendation of 3%, 3% of the tax levy, which is $145,000. To that computation, you add in the new construction value, which is provided by the King County Assessor, and this year, the tax value of that is $41,662. That was based on, oh, let's see, the new construction value, which was $36 million going on to the tax rolls for 2019. So if you use 1% plus new construction, the 19 proposed levy would be $4,927,000. If you use the 3% increase plus new construction, the levy would be $5,24,421. So I have prepared two different scenarios, one using the 1% increase in the calculation of the rate, and then I will walk you through the 3% increase in the calculation of the rate. So with 1%, as I said, the 1% levy would be $4,927,000. This is about a $90,038 increase over last year's levy, and it includes the 1% value, $48,376, plus new construction, $41,662. So adding those together, you come out with the levy of $4,927,000. Then you look at your assessed valuation, and the King County Assessor has reported that our preliminary assessed valuation for 2019 is just over $4.8 billion. That is the greatest increase in assessed value we've had since 2015. So it really took a large jump this year. It was 13.3% greater than last year. When you take the levy divided by the assessed valuation, you come up with a value of $1.02 for every $1,000 of assessed valuation. So it's simply a mathematical equation, levy divided by assessed valuation times 1,000 is 1.02. Now, remember, this doesn't include the bond levy, the voted levy. This is just the regular levy. Last year, our levy was $1.14. So with a 1% increase, our levy would be $1.02. Walking through the same calculation with a 3% increase, you would have a levy of $5,024,421. Same new construction value, but the 3% increase adds $145,128 to the levy. Again, walking through the calculation with the same assessed valuation provided by the assessor, you come up with a levy rate of $1.04, which is 2 cents more than the levy rate with a 1% increase. Again, both of these levy rates are significantly lower than last year, and that's due to the increase in assessed value. This chart shows you the impact of revenue to the city when taking a 1% levy or a 3% levy for 2019-2020. Now, I know tonight, we are really only focusing on the 2019 levy, but the budget does include a 3% increase for 2020 as well, but we won't set that until next year. So for 2019, to take a 1% versus a 3%, the difference in revenue to the city is $96,753. If you take a 1% in 2020, 19 and 20, your levy would be $4.9 million next year. If you took a 3% levy increase, your levy next year would be $5,175,000. And in 2020, then, the difference in the levies is $198,208. So you can see that the compounding of the levy increase or not is pretty significant over time. And again, the 3% levy increase could come from the bank capacity. I wanted to illustrate the impact of the levy increases on two homeowner scenarios. So if you assume that in 2018, you had a home valued at $600,000, which is probably fairly typical for Kenmore, even though the median value for Kenmore in 2018 was 500, but I think 600, Rob and I thought 600,000 was probably more realistic, your tax at the rate of $1.14 for the city of Kenmore would have been about $684. In 2019, if the assessed valuation of your home did not change at all, and you were taxed at the rate of $1.02, the 1% levy, your tax liability would be $612, which is actually a decrease from 2018. If you were taxed at the rate of $1.04, which would be the 3% levy, your tax would be $624,000 on that $600,000 home, which is $60 less than the prior year. That's probably not realistic, because I think in the city of Kenmore, most of the homes did increase in value. So I did another scenario with a 12% increase, which was pretty close to the value increase citywide in Kenmore. If you took out new construction, the AV for the city went up about 12%. So if your home was $600,000 in 2018 and increased 12% in 2019, it would be about $672,000. The tax, then, at the 2019 rate of $1.02, which would be the 1% levy, your tax would be about $685, which is really equal to or about a dollar more than it was last year. And if you were taxed at the rate of $1.04 or the 3% levy, your tax would be $699 for the year, which is $15 more. So you can see that a 12% increase in the value of the home, but a small increase in the value of the levy does not really result in a substantial increase in the value of the tax. This graph shows the portion of the total tax bill that is typical for a property in the city of Kenmore, based on 2018 rates, since that's all we have at the moment. So of the total tax bill in all the 12 taxing jurisdictions, a total tax bill is about $7,024. And only 10% of that comes to the city of Kenmore for, in the regular tax levy. You can see there's a piece in there also for the walkways and waterways bond, which was the voter-approved bond. But the city of Kenmore's operating portion of that total tax pie is only $684. On this chart, I want, we wanted to compare our revenue per capita to that of our neighboring cities. And I used the state auditor's local government financial reporting system to gather the data for this graph and to illustrate as best as possible what our operating revenue status is. This is just the general fund, which is our operating fund, and it does not include any surface water fees or any capital resources. I made some adjustments to remove the costs and the resources for fire and EMS services that Bothell and Kirkland both provide, but other cities do not, in order to bring them more comparable. That was really the greatest difference between the cities. Some are contract cities, some are full-service cities, but that's the biggest difference in the general fund. I didn't make any modifications from municipal court or police, because all the cities have to provide those services, whether they do it in-house or by contract, so it's still a common obligation. And then on this graph, you can see that Kenmore's per capita revenue is the lowest of the six. And besides the specific revenues that I detailed here, license and permits, utility tax, sales tax, and property tax, the other category, for your information, is other things like charges for services, grants, fines, penalties, gambling tax, things like that. The second graph shows.
Can I make one point?
Sure.
So on the revenue, go back to the revenue.
Yes.
So if you compare Kenmore to Lake Forest Park, if it wasn't for their big other category, we'd be pretty close to similar. But I was talking to their city administrator and their chief of police a few weeks ago, and they were telling me that they net close to $1 million a year in red light running camera revenue and school zone violation camera revenue. And that kind of revenue would be in that other category. So I don't know if that explains all of the difference, but I think that's a big contributor to why they have such a big other category as their red light running revenue that they got.
Yes, that's definitely in there, under fines and penalties. So a similar scenario for the expenditure. General government and public safety are called out separately, the other combined social services, culture and recreation, transportation costs, trying to just keep the graph from being too busy. But the totals are what is the key here. And as I mentioned earlier, the cost of fire and EMS were removed, because Bothell and Kirkland directly provide those services, but the other cities do not. So what I was trying to show here is that for a pretty low amount of taxes and fees per capita, Kenmore has been able to provide really great services for a very good value. On this graph, I show this to you every year. I think it's pretty interesting and telling, because I like, you can see over time how a thriving economy and growth in the assessed value of the city impacts the tax rate by lowering it. Then when we went into a recession from 2009 to 2013, the decrease in assessed valuation drives the tax rate up. And then coming out of that recession, the rate started to drop again. And for 2019, even with a 3% levy, the tax rate of $1.04 is the lowest that it has ever been in the city. The bottom-left graph shows the levy dollars over time, and the graph on the bottom-right, the new construction over time. And you can see that in 2019, our new construction values dropped off considerably from, you know, the last few really great years that we've had. Moving on to the walkways and waterways excess property tax levy, if you recall that back in 2016, the voters approved this bond measure, and we sold bonds at par of $9.2 million, and we received revenue of $9.8 million. Of that $9.2 million par value, we still owe $7.4 million as of the end of this year, and our debt service payment in 2019 is, needs to be $1,223,000. So the tax levy needs to raise this amount, and using the assessed valuation of $4.8 billion, the tax rate will need to be about 25 cents per $1,000 of assessed valuation. So when you add this excess levy to the regular tax levy, whether it's 1.1 or $1.04, in this example, the total levy would be $1.29 compared to 2018, when it was $1.43. So it is still significantly less. So this concludes the present, my presentation portion of the public hearing. I would again like to mention that there will be a public hearing also next week, Tuesday, on the budget, and hopefully, at that meeting, direction will be provided on the desired tax levy and other requests in the budget, so that the proper ordinances can be brought back for adoption at the November 19th council meeting. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, why don't we open up the public hearing then? Who's first on the list?
I'm Susan Gardner. I live in the Arrowhead neighborhood of Kenmore. I'm going to speak against the 3% levy. I will, as far as income for the city, there was some time ago where the, an advisory ballot went out to the citizens about the card room, which, as I understand, was about a third of the city's income. The advisory ballot, with a slim majority, said, leave the card room in place, and the city consequently removed it. As you could see from some of the chart there, the, if you have more businesses, you get more sales tax. A lot of those, except for maybe Shoreline and Lake Forest Park, might have been similar, you need more business. We have places for businesses to go, and why we can't get any to keep the citizens here and spend money here instead of going elsewhere, which I do, then I think that would be a good approach. I watch money being spent that I really don't understand. One, we did pay for the sidewalks and waterways, and I, and there was a new dock that was put in at the slough on the east side of the bridge, and now I see that everything's being torn up again. It's like, are we redoing something? Do we spend money for no reason, and now we're redoing it again? Or did we just have extra money to do that? A specific example about a lot of waste is the ditch that's right outside my house, Stormwater Ditch. This summer, apparently, the city decided they had money to churn up the ditch, and that was it. I had been kind of trying to get things planted in there, so it was kind of a low-quality bio swell, but they churned it up so that while I was gone, you apparently had a major storm here, and it scoured it out down to sand, big cobbles, and the clay that is there. It also blocked the culvert downstream and forced the water to go over the top, according to our reports from my neighbors. So I talked to the city about that, and they've come back, and they fixed it, and they've done that by laying a coir mat down and then putting a check dams on it. I don't know if anything else is going to happen, but I watched the person putting the check dams in, and this is, this is where, I mean, when I watched five people blow leaves off of Juanita Drive, I just don't understand why you need five people to blow leaves. And they just blow them on private property. They don't rake them up, you know, it probably will end up in the storm drains anyway. But in my case, I watched a guy reach into the back of a truck with one hand and slowly move the rock into my ditch, toss it into the ditch, and now we'll do it again. And we just did that all day. And eventually, those rocks got arranged into check dams, but it was, if you had actually contracted the project out, it could have been done in a half hour. But instead, it was like an all-day job for one person. Apparently, we just really have too many employees that need to be, to have busy work. And so I think you need to examine whether or not we really need all of those employees before you increase the levy. Thank you.
Five minutes, huh? Wow. Thank you, all of you, for your service. I've been there, done that, and I know what it's like, and so I appreciate everything you've done for the city. I'm a little bit disturbed when I see the budget, and I, those are great figures, but they don't really work out when you have your own personal finances you're trying to finance. And as I'm getting older, I'm realizing that there's going to be a day when I have a fixed income, and 3%, that's for 19 and then for 20, is just too much. I think that, I look back to that color photo that you guys sent, it was a 20-year, of the 20 years of the city, and it was really well-done. But you looked in there, and we had seven employees that worked for the city. And I tried to get, to find out how many employees we have now, but there's a point where we're not going to be Kirkland. I came to the realization a long time ago, we're not going to be Kirkland, we're not going to be Bellevue, we don't want to be like Bothell. So we're Kenmore, and we just can't go on and keep raising taxes. And I'm a Democrat, and I'm proud of it, but there comes a point where you just can't do it anymore. I checked, I did a search to find out where we were, and I found out our sales tax is now 10%, is that correct? Is that, okay. So, and I looked around, and we're like 96 percentile highest around. And everyone's doing it, but that doesn't make it right. The other thing is, and we heard before, we have, I went around today and checked, we have nine business vacancies. And if you keep raising the per diem that all these people have to pay, they're going to move in and want to know how much they're going to have to pay, and our tax rate's going to be higher. So I just think 1%, we didn't do it for a long, long time, and then I guess you're going to try to catch up where you left off. But to me, 3% is a little bit excessive. And then they also had things that were money, that the money was going to go to, and it had $30,000 for a new phone system, $45,000 for a new website, $58,000 for police payment in 2017, and then all employees will get a pay increase of 3.6% for both years. So, you know, city staff, I love city staff, but they come and go. Mill Creek, obviously, their staff come and go. And, you know, you are representatives, and you're the ones that we're relying on and we're trusting. And you don't want to hear somebody say that, when you're in Safeway 15 years from now, that you were the ones that raised the taxes the highest it's ever been in the city. Thank you very much.
There's nobody else signed up, but I do want to note the email from Mr. Thatcher that's in front of all of you guys, or came earlier today.
Is there anybody else who wants to comment? You can come up and comment, and then when you're done, you need to sign in with the city clerk.
I'm sorry, between the voting and the two grandkids that live with us, I haven't had much time to devote much to this issue, but.
Could we get your name and?
Oh, I'm sorry. Will Nattalonpass.
Okay, and you live in Kenmore?
Live in Kenmore.
Okay.
Sorry. Well, first of all, I agree, the 3% increase, particularly when you're on a fixed income, which my wife and I are, is not good timing. And also, that total levy that you talk about, that the total levy rate is less, has decreased, doesn't mean anything, because we're still paying our property taxes. And right now, I'm paying $8,100 a year. And for a fixed income, where you get about $2 a year increase on your social security, that's not the right, the right thing to do. So the first thing I wanted to say, I know I've got a few minutes left, I think, I hope there are cities in this country that give certain credits to people that are in retirement situation. In some places, and I understand California, they give tax breaks if you're over 66 or 67. I'm 77, so I've been around a little bit, and we have lived very, you know, carefully, not spent a lot of money. But right now, the 3% is unrealistic. And so I support the other gentleman's issue on that. The other thing is, I suggest, and somebody mentioned it too, is I think there could be a committee established for development, economic development, and there may be one already, but something specifically that attracts good, sound businesses in this area. We don't want to overcrowd it. We love it out here. But I think that if we want more revenue, that would be certainly something, and I suggest something along the Chamber of Commerce, that you have a committee, or whatever, and set out a, you know, a program that might, you know, bring in some revenue. Getting back to Lake Forest Park, I got one of those tickets, too. That's why they're doing so well. But that's not the way, how we see a city develop. We need to be creative, we need to be productive. Now, the other thing that is more personal about where we live is that nobody pays for paving in our area. paving in our area. We have a private lane, but it takes a lot of cleaning up. So nobody pays for the paving. There's no streetlights. There's no maintenance. Nobody comes through. The only guy, the only people that come through is the garbage people, to pick up the garbage. So there is no repair, no nothing. Underground water drainage systems are all done by ourselves, the whole thing. I don't know what service we get, other than whatever, what is left over. So that is the other thing. So we, we just feel that, that 3%, again, particularly for when you're on a fixed income, and you have to take out of your 401K money and all that stuff, it's no, it's no fun. So I think that needs to be addressed. And if, and I think the city could be really progressive if they thought about that group of people that are in that situation and say, okay, we have a little discount for the elderly, for the people that don't have all the means to pay for it. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Make sure you sign in with the city clerk. Thank you. Is there anybody else who, anybody else want to speak in the public hearing? Come on up.
My name's Bob Spider. I live over in behind the Indowood Golf Course. And I would like a little more clarification on something that was mentioned in the presentation, something about money not being taken, $790,000 or something along those lines. I'm not, I don't understand exactly what that is. So...
Maybe I could get that question answered at some point here.
Yeah, we'll make, we'll talk about that.
Okay. And two, I noticed the 3% increase is significantly above the rate of inflation for the, for the year. I'm just wondering why we need to do that. It seems, it seems like we've spent quite a bit of money on, on parts and recreation and the road lately. Also, I'd like to know a little bit more about what we have in store for us, as far as the work on the bridge over the Semamix River goes. That's all I have to say.
Is there anybody else who wants to be heard? Anybody else who wants to be heard? Anybody else who wants to be heard? All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. Briefly, I want to thank Ms. Gardner, Mr. Colwell, Mr. Natalembas, sorry if I messed that up, but I will say that in our city council legislative agenda, we are trying to push to expand, I think, the property exemption for seniors, which right now is fairly limited. And that's something we've been working on for a few years now, but it's an ongoing issue that we work with other cities on. And then I'm hoping that staff can get back to Mr. Spider with some of his questions. So do we have any questions for Ms. Gregory? Councilmember Marshall.
Yes, could you address Mr. Spider's question about money not taken? Sort of overview of that.
I believe that he's referring to the 752,000 bank capacity.
Can we give him a, yeah. Oh, he's just finishing.
I'm sorry. Sure.
Thank you. They're going to answer your question right now. Okay, thank you.
And I appreciate that you mentioned the property tax exemption. There is a, an exemption based on income, and I don't remember if it's age-based, but there is some exemption that folks can apply for, for property tax relief.
Yeah, and I think it tops out at $40,000 in income, which is awfully low right now. And that's set by the state, and we don't have a whole lot of, we don't have any flexibility with administering that. So we are looking to raise the income threshold on that, too, so more people can qualify.
That would be great. We should have a link or something about that on our website. But in regard to money not taken, we have $752,000 in banked capacity. And bank capacity is the accumulation of revenue that the city did not take during the nine years when the city did not increase the levy by the allowable 1%. So in those years when the city took no increase, the county assessor accumulated what we could have taken, had we taken a 1%, and has tracked that over time and reports that to us every year. So that's the value as of 2018 that is available as a result of not taking a levy in prior years.
Thank you. Councilmember Curtis.
So a comment on some of the information in the presentation. I appreciate the way you sort of think of the what-ifs and the, like, the fact that the tax rate went down, it says, oh, man, that's fantastic, but then you look at, oh, but we have to take the value of the house into account. So you threw, throw that little calculation, and where you're comparing cities, you say, well, who has to pay for police and fire outside of that? So I just appreciate your way of trying to think of every variable that affects a number. So looking at the page, it says, tax effect on homeowner. For me, this was one of the more valuable sheets here. So if you just looked at the 3%, you'd say, oh, everybody saved $60. But their value of their house went up, and that's part of the equation, how much they charge. So it's $15 more per month, I mean, per year. So, you know, looking at all the city needs, and I do understand that every dollar we spend, every decision that the city council makes, that money comes out of somebody's pocket. I totally, absolutely understand that. And one way to look at it is, well, $15, am I giving people their value for the $15 that I'm taking from, extra from them this year? I believe we are. I think as a city, we're doing a lot of really valuable things that we've heard from our citizens that they want. And then if we could just flip to the page, the lowest general, the per capita numbers, revenue per capita and expenditures per capita. If we've seen those before, I'd forgotten. I think that was a useful comparison, again, once you take out the variables, to see that even though our people, especially on fixed incomes, are hurting under the tax burden, in fact, it could be worse, living in some nearby cities. So it feels to me like we're trying to be responsible, seriously responsible as a council with the money that we're using, that comes from our citizens. And we do want to give value for every single dollar that we spend. That's all I had to say.
Anybody else want to say anything? Councilmember Smith.
Well, kind of following up from last week, I'm pretty much, I feel like this graph does help explain on the revenue and expenditure side, but it also helps define that we are primarily driven by property tax revenue. And, and I think we had, part of acknowledging that is acknowledging the fact we can't do everything we want to do, because we don't have the resources that a lot of the other cities in this comparison study have. And just because we've banked it, doesn't mean we need to tap into it. And my fear is that we tap into our bank capacity when we've got essentially a booming economy, that we lose what taxing capacity we have at other future times. And then I guess I'd add to that, we have increased fees and taxes in other ways and throughout the last few years, in ways that are pretty significant, the impact on the average citizen, but don't show up necessarily as what the increase, what the delta is between what it was before and what it is now. And, and just last week, we talked about a significant increase in the surface water management fee. And that's maybe a capital expense, and doesn't show here in our general fund side, but still, that is an impact on our citizens that isn't reflective necessarily of what we can expect on a property tax bank capacity increase. So I, I just feel like, one of the things that's so telling in this, it is the sales tax aspect. And when you look at this graph and you see where revenue is, we don't have a lot of sales tax. And because of that, that means that if we want to provide more services, we have to tax our citizens for more. And I think until we get to that point where we have that revenue stream to count on, we need to keep ourselves in check on the expense side. So those are my thoughts.
Okay. And I, you know, I'm a homeowner. I've felt the property tax increases the last few years, too. And I just, for the public, want to point out that the big increases we've seen over the last year or so has been primarily from the state increased their levy for schools pretty dramatically a year ago, that we started to see in this year's property tax bills. And also, the sound transit, the voter-approved Sound Transit 3 was the other big, big bump that we've seen. You don't have anything more? I think we'll move on to, okay, Councilmember Marshall.
If anybody, perhaps the city manager, maybe Ms. Gregory recalls roughly, or in the ballpark, I was interested in Ms. Gardner's comment about the card room. What sort of revenues did that bring in, if we recall?
I believe back in the year that we generated the most revenue, it was in excess of $800,000 a year.
Out of a general fund budget of how much?
Probably in those years, maybe that was around 2005, I'm guessing here.
I think we were collecting the tax up through 2010 or 2011.
Right. I was just referring to the highest year, but we were until, until about 2010 or 11. So probably around $8 million annual general fund.
So about 10% of the general fund budget, roughly?
Yeah, it was, it was pretty significant. Other years, it averaged about $500,000, but I remember 800 was probably the biggest year.
Okay. Let's move on to the business agenda. We're going to continue discussing the budget. Ms. Gregory.
Thank you. I believe Rob is going to assist me with this, city manager. Would you like me to put anything up on the projector?
Why a presentation?
You do?
We do not.
No, we do not. Okay.
So this is really, you know, we've, we presented all of the departments and funds to you, so all that has been completed. And so now, this is to give you a chance to deliberate and talk about any loose ends, things you wanted to pose and talk about. One thing I did is, I did see the reluctance on some of you to approve a 3% property tax increase. So I went to the drawing board with my coworkers, my department heads, and I said, okay, what if, what if we do not take the 3%, and it's just a 1%? What does that look like? And what additional things can you cut out of the budget without, if possible, without impacting services to our citizens? So my department heads did a great job in coming up with some things. There's actually several things that may have a negative impact on the, on the general fund balance that have come up just recently. And that's on page two of the memo, and I think it got uploaded to the internet, into the packet. And it's an email that I sent to you over the weekend. So there's, there's three, there's four things that could affect the budget's bottom line that just recently were discussed. One is reducing the property tax increase from 3% to 1%. The other is the, just last week, several of you expressed a desire to have a half-time recreation coordinator. The temporary arch capital contribution, I heard some of you express a desire to move that from Strategic Opportunities Fund to General Fund. And then lastly, the public workshop site acquisition costs. We had all that budgeted in 2021 and beyond, but we actually do need to do some site investigation and some other things to actually narrow it down to the site that we're looking for. So that's a recent add on my part. That totals $555,000. So we do have about that much in suggested cuts for the next biennium, and that's in the table that's shown, second to last page of this. So the beginning part of that table shows... Rob, we've, we've got a quick question, really quickly. Councilmember Schrempf.
Oh, just a quick clarification. On the first page of the memo, it talks about the recordinator as 45 to 50, and then on the second page, it talks about $100,000.
Yeah, that's because we're looking at it for the biennium.
Got it. That makes sense.
Yeah. So top of, top of page two, that's, that's all biennium numbers.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the other point of clarification is, I actually think, if I'm remembering correctly, I think we actually took a formal vote.
Yes.
So, yeah, it wasn't, it was more than just sort of passing interest.
Good point. Thank you. Yes. So anyway, the table, second to last page, shows some suggested cuts. So on the incubator, we're seeing increase in customers, and, and we had proposed some funding there to help service those clients, but we're proposing to reduce that number and just make do with the current budget. Another idea is, and this is a policy discussion that's probably going to need more discussion than just tonight, but transitioning the incubator into an independent nonprofit by 2020, and in 2020, we would still provide support, but we wouldn't, but it would cut our expenses probably by about in half. Timing of that probably won't be precise, but will, that would be the goal. Also, we have a town square hangar and post office property management company, and my coworkers have offered to bring that in-house, so we would be the property manager. There's pros and cons to that, but I think the, the pros may outweigh the cons. And then item number four there, you can see bringing landscape maintenance in-house for City Hall, Town Square, and the post office. The one caveat there is that does assume we have five maintenance workers. And then, and then extending the life of existing furniture to the next biennium. We were going to do some moving around and changing of furniture, and we've had, we've had some furniture that's going to be coming up on 10 years old, but we can extend that into the next biennium. On number six, we had over budgeted the cost of installation of our, our street banners, so we reduced that to a more historical number. Same thing on dump fees. We reduced that down to a more historical number. Our city traffic engineer is suggesting that we get the traffic model from our consultant and bring that in-house. And then, and then...
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes, please.
So we had a, you know, our last traffic engineer, and we still had a consultant for the traffic model. Can you give me like a two second?
What's that?
So we had the traffic engineer, um, and still had a traffic model that was done by a consultant. Why, I guess, why haven't we brought it in-house earlier?
Because, um, having a traffic model is pretty sophisticated. It takes a lot of training to figure out how to do that. We had, uh, Farr and Pierce do our traffic models, uh, citywide. And, um, so the idea here is to put our traffic engineer through that training so that he can do it in-house.
How much would it cost to get him trained up? Would it be more than the 20,000 to bring it back in-house?
We'll do that within the existing funds we have, with the, with the existing training budget. Does he have time in his workload? Yeah, especially since, um, those, uh, neighborhood projects were completed. There's, um, now, he always has a backlog of citizen action requests, and so he has to juggle those. But, yeah, the idea is that he would make room in his schedule for that. Now just comment that even if we don't go with this, I hope that we change our consultant going forward. Because of the cost modeling errors on 68th. I agree, I'm with you on that one. Okay, thank you. I don't know if you want me to keep going through all these items one by one, or if you just have questions? Yeah?
One that you just touched, oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, go for it.
This has, has to do with the, uh, the landscape maintenance for city hall and town square and post offices. So that's currently contracted out?
Yeah.
Okay, and so the current budget had that budgeted at 74. So you're saying if, with five maintenance workers, that we can, we're, we can adequately address that?
Yep.
Okay, now that, I mean, that's a significant creative way that gets to something that's pretty important. So, um, to me, that's a, that's a no-brainer, uh, because I know that the will was to have five anyway, uh, even though I was pushing for one less. But it's like, if we can have it and, and reduce 74,000 in the contracting budget, then I, I think that's a, uh, definitely a doer.
Especially since we were facing the more than doubling of the LNI, uh, minimum wage. So Labor and Industries decided to change the way they calculate what landscape workers are paid and went from 17 to $37 an hour. So the more, uh, when I say landscape workers, I mean, private sector contracted maintenance work or landscape workers that do work on public projects. So when you see costs like that skyrocket, it makes even more sense to bring it in-house. It's kind of a two birds, one stone situation. Yeah. Yeah, I think we should go through these one by one, and if you have questions, just feel free to speak up. Okay. Yeah, Councilmember-
So, up at the first one, uh, eliminate increase to incubator services, what would we be eliminating exactly?
Yeah, Nancy Owsley, who's in charge of that, is ready to answer that question.
Good evening, uh, councilmembers. We had proposed, because we are, we are growing as far as our client base, to, to add actually, um, an on-call, uh, business, um, development consultant, that would, that would amount to about $10,500. And, and so, uh, it's something that we haven't had in, in the past, and so it made sense to target this for a reduction and to stay with the current consultant hours that we have.
Councilmember Curtis?
I'd like to comment on that one. So again, this sort of mixes my private life and my personal life, but as I transitioned out of medicine, I could not have started two new businesses without Arkham Business Incubator. The classes that they gave, the training that I had, now, some of it's applies to a business farther along than mine. But as it is now, there are so many people in the incubator, especially the virtual, they don't get to meet with Cory more than about every six weeks. So at some point, you know, it feels like they may not be getting their money's worth now, and I think one person can only be smeared so thin. So, my recommendation would be, I really believe there's extreme value in this, and to spend $10,000 to get a second person there, to get more people up to speed, like I have accomplished this last year, I think is hugely valuable to our city. So, that one I wouldn't want to cut.
Councilmember Smith?
I kind of, I sort of a little bit lumped one and the first two together because they both have to do with the incubator and, and just some thoughts. So I, I'm definitely in favor of the second one, and I'm likely in favor of the first one. But I'd like to know, um, from a fee perspective, is there the ability to increase sufficient, um, businesses within the incubator from a cost perspective enough to make up some of the difference on the 10-5?
We, we could consider that. We haven't, uh, changed our fee structure, um, either, either for the sub-east space or for the, what we call the virtual incubator monthly fee. So that could be considered. I can't give you a number right off the top of my head about what it would be.
But what I was thinking, so I mean, that's roughly, on the first one, that's roughly 1,000 a month, just, or a little under that. And so with all the businesses in the incubator, it would seem like we could maybe, that's possible to make up that since we haven't really had a fee change. And there is immense value, and there's immense value to growing these businesses. There, it's not like they're not getting something out of it. And so it doesn't seem like it's unreasonable to think about the revenue side of that to help offset the expense.
Yeah, could certainly be considered. But, um, I, and I'll, I'll just say, for a, a fee increase, you want to be able to provide timely and, and good service to us, as Dr., Councilmember Curtis was saying.
Councilmember Curtis?
That was my comment, that right now, one person is stretched very thin. And if you just charged me more, and I still can't get in more than every six weeks, you haven't really provided better service. So somehow, you need an extra bit of a body, some number of hours, to provide the bare minimum that people think they're supposed to be getting now.
And, and if you don't mind me responding, I think that's reasonable. I just think that it's also not unreasonable to ask to be paid a little more for that. And so, I don't know how, do you know how we would get to understand what that revenue potential would be?
I could, I could run some, some scenarios.
Okay, okay, good, so maybe, okay.
So we're on number six, I think? Uh, I think I was on, uh, nine and 10. Oh, right. Those two kind of go together. We just looked closely at what, uh, we're using for engineering design and other consulting services for, um, street and other project design, and we felt we could, uh, bring those numbers down. I'd still like to retain about 50,000, um, for southwest downtown planning, including Lake Point. I think, um, that we need to, from an economic development standpoint, I think we need to, um, be able to have some funding there to, um, work with potential property owners and developers on what could really happen down in that part of the city. Could you speak to number 10 a little bit? What services for streets? That's kind of broad, what? Yeah, so engineering, engineering has, um, uh, funding, uh, amount for, uh, design of, uh, road projects and sidewalk projects and other things that come up. And, um, we were able to talk to him about, uh, bringing that number, number down quite a bit. Still getting the work done that is programmed, uh, but just, uh, less of a contingency there. Okay. Yeah. Uh, our chief of police took a look at the jail budget, and, uh, we spent about a million per biennium, so about a half a million a year on jail. And, uh, we, to, to be safe, we tend to over-budget that number a little bit. But we thought we could reduce it by 25,000 a year and still be, still have a cushion there. And then, uh, Councilmember Schrebnik, last meeting, suggested paying for the phone system out of the equipment replacement fund, and we thought that was a good idea.
Can you have a question on that? Can you remind me what, so what was the funding source for that?
What, was it, or what is it?
What is it for the equip, equipment fund, replacement fund?
The funding for the equipment replacement fund are the other funds and departments of the city. So, um, those departments who have vehicles and equipment, um, computer systems, they pay a, a portion of, um, their budget to the equipment replacement fund and create this sinking fund for future replacement. So, um, for instance, if the street fund buys a truck, uh, we calculate the replacement of that truck maybe in seven years, and every year, build a street fund for that and put it in that sinking fund. So the equipment replacement fund is funded by the rest of the city who are using the vehicles and the equipment.
Okay, so it's not, it's not really eliminating the fee, it's just shifting it to spread it out?
Well, we have a, um-
I mean, we, we still have to pay the, so, I mean, a lot of these are eliminating it, so we're actually not eliminating, we're just shifting it though.
We're shifting it out of the general fund.
Right, okay.
And in, funding it from the sinking fund.
Yeah, there's a pretty healthy fund balance in the equipment replacement fund, and so we'd pay for it out of that one-time fund balance.
Okay.
Yeah. Councilmember Marshall?
To the jail fund briefly, what was the recent trend referenced? And then how particularly, if, uh, jail funding is reduced, does that mean there's more diversion programs or more jail alternatives that we, we would be, the prosecution would be recommending, or how's it work?
Yeah, thank you, good question. We've, we've been noticing a reduction in our jail expenditures over the last couple of years. There's a couple of different theories. One is that our police officers are buying more donuts, and, no, I'm just kidding. My chief would not be happy if I made that joke in front of him, so. But, uh, a lot of it has to do with, um, the, the philosophy of the judge and how much, uh, the sentencing they want to do. And, uh, it could be because of that, but we don't have a strong indicator as to why our jail, um, expenditures are going down. Crime hasn't changed a lot. Number of arrests hasn't, haven't changed a lot. So to me, it is probably on the court side of the equation, but I can't say for sure.
I apologize, I've kind of asked this before, and do we still offer a diversion dismissal for delectable third degrees, do you know, offhand? If, if they, people get the license back?
Yes, I believe we did follow King County's, uh, prosecutors. Yes, yes, we did, yeah, we're doing that. Yep. And so that would be another contributor, right? Okay, and then, uh, the, the GIS services that I have proposed in the budget, we could have, uh, the surface water management fund pay for about 25% of that, and that takes that much pressure off the general fund.
I have a question on that.
Councilmember Smith?
This is what, this is exactly what I was afraid would happen when we had this discussion last week, because we created a plan, we had a, a, a forecast of revenues and expenses, and we increased that fee based on what we had. And if we just, every now and then, just shift something else into that fund, then all of a sudden, it throws that whole scenario out of whack. And so, I'm very much against that. And I'm not against it necessarily because I don't believe it couldn't possibly be in there. I'm against it because we haven't even gone a week yet, and we're already looking at something else to put into that fund, and I just think it's the wrong way to approach it.
Um, I think it's a legitimate, a, a legitimate cost that the SWIM fund can handle.
It should have been in there then, when we had our pro forma last week. Don't you agree?
Well, uh, you asked me to cut the budget by half a million just last week too, so.
I understand.
And so if I would have known that, I would have not been so generous with the SWIM fund.
Okay, well, I just, I, I just think this is a perfect example as a council, when we created a revenue stream to address capital expenses and, and we forecast out, this is one of those things where I would not like to see us do that. I just think it, it sets us up for precedent of continually putting stuff into that SWIM fund.
We're happy to put that in the model and see what it does to the rates. I doubt it will do anything.
And I don't think it will do that much to it. But what I do know is that if every time we need to look at it and we keep poking something in, then it will, it will affect the taxes significantly, because we'll have to pay for it at the back end then.
Councilmember Curtis?
I guess to me, the question is who uses GIS the most? And is it, is this sort of, uh, proportionally distributing that cost over the differed units that use it? So I imagine Public Works use it a lot. I would think that the SWIM fin, fund would use it quite a bit. Who else use it besides those two?
Community Development uses it a great deal, because they're creating maps and examining cri, needing to know where critical areas are, and that's a big feature of GIS. The SWIM fund, the folks in the surface water fund do use it. Um, and even though we may budget it in there, uh, we can't charge them if they don't use it. So, in reality, uh, what we actually charge to the SWIM fund has to be based on actual usage. I mean, we'd be accountable to not only you, but the auditors who look at enterprise funds very carefully to make sure that they're not being overcharged for, for expenses that are not appropriate.
So this would be more like a, um, 25, up to $25,000 if that was the amount of service used?
If that was the amount of service used. But, um, th, their need is growing. They have the most capacity, but their, uh, need is greater than the capacity they have to, uh, perform GIS. The other departments in the general fund don't even have the capacity to, um, or the knowledge to do GIS work. So that's why most of the expenses in the general fund where community development and Public Works are budgeted.
Yeah, every time that GIS has come up, Mr. Sawyer's always kind of been part of the conversation. So, I have always thought that those two are kind of married together anyway. I think it's probably an appropriate place to, I'd rather have that there than have it in the general fund myself. Uh, next item, I think Deputy Mayor Herbig noticed, uh, an anomaly in the clerk's office. We looked closer into that, and there was an error in over-budgeting benefits there in the clerk's office. So thank you for that. Also, um, the city receives about 50,000 a year in proceeds from, um, the King County Park levy, and our budget currently does not allocate that. And the levy only goes through 2019. They're talking about a renewal, so that it would start back up again in 2020, but we're not counting on that renewal. And, uh, I did clarify that you can use those proceeds for either operating or capital. And, um, so I'm recommending that we, uh, use those funds for operating starting in 2019. But it's shown just as a one-time 50,000, because we're not counting on the renewal in 2020. Councilmember Dzieski?
What have we historically used that money for?
Capital. Yep.
Is there something that was budgeted that we wouldn't be able to do if we moved it to the operations?
No, it's, uh, we currently just did not allocate that funding to anything so far. But you know, as things, as some pretty major projects get built, both on our streets and our parks, I do recommend that we shift towards an operations mode. I know we like to build stuff, and it's fun to build new things, but they, we have to maintain them, so. And you're probably surprised hearing that from me. But, um, I think we do need to think about all the parks and roads and streets that we've built so far and shift some of the funding over to be, to maintaining them. And then I think Councilmember Schrebnik, if I'm not mistaken, had the idea of using some of the art fund for concerts and movies. There's about $70,000 of a fund balance in there right now, and we could possibly take about 20,000 of that to help fund our movies and concerts. Uh, you're certainly welcome to use more than that, but it's kind of, I see it as one-time money, the art funds. And also, I think you'd probably want to, uh, retain some art funding to, to, uh, pay for actual art pieces. I'm assuming that that's something you'd like to do as a council eventually. I, I brought, yeah, I, I brought that up with Councilmember Schrebnik. I brought, yeah, I brought that up with Councilmember Shrevnik last week. And I was just kind of tossing spaghetti at the wall and seeing what stuck. But the more I think about it, the less excited I am about moving that out of the general fund. Just from a sustainability standpoint. We're talking $10,000 a year. That's seven years' worth. And then we're completely out of our art fund. And then we don't have anything to show for it. The events are great, but they are kind of an ongoing expense. And treating them as a, using one-time funds to pay for ongoing expenses is a philosophical barrier that I have a trouble, have trouble crossing. Councilmember Curtis and Councilmember Shrevnik.
Isn't the art fund replenished, though, as 1% of projects that we build? Public art? It seems like there's a lot of projects coming online. We'd be replenishing that in some way? Or do you always tuck it into the individual project that we're funding?
Both. In many cases, the park projects incorporate art into their construction. And those that don't are obligated to pay 1% to the fund. And we discussed that, I think that was just last week. And I'm sorry that you missed it, that I'm behind on charging those projects. There are a number of projects that owe 1% of their construction budget to this fund. And we'll be making those entries and charging those budgets. But again, it is one-time based on construction. It's not, as long as we're, we're building and, and using our public works to build projects and using our budgets, we can charge it. Sometimes we get into budget issues with those projects and there's not much capacity for art. So that's a decision that needs to be addressed, maybe on a case-by-case basis. But it does get replenished. So what the balance that Rob just mentioned is what is currently in the fund.
Thank you.
So with other ongoing projects, there'll probably be additional money put into that fund. So it could probably last more than seven years based on the projects we know that are in the pipeline.
Councilmember Shrevnik, did you have a question? Got answered.
Yeah, Councilmember Curtis asked the question.
Councilmember Danuski.
Yeah, I also kind of hesitate to use it for the concerts and movies. Just, you know, at the end of the day, you don't have anything to show for it. So I guess I'm not completely against doing it once or twice. But I, I feel like at some point, we should probably talk policy on how we want to allocate that kind of money. And it doesn't need to be denied, but thought.
Councilmember Shrevnik.
I, I do have a different point. I mean, the reason that came up, and I know Councilmember Curtis wasn't here, but I, it was the idea that the arts fund could be conceptually broader than just the physical art pieces, that conceptually, we might want to think about using it for performing arts. And this is the way that we currently have performing arts is the concerts and the movies. So it was kind of making a statement of, you know, how do we want to use this fund in general? So that's, that's why I was thinking that a portion...
Number 17.
Yeah, we had $50,000 budgeted for updating the park impact fee. And we talked to our consultant with Muni Manage, Ben Yazigi. And he's, he believes he can do that park impact fee for, for us within his existing contract. In addition, our community development director had some other miscellaneous line items to reduce, which gets you to that $50,000. And then lastly, NEMCO, that stands for North Shore Emergency Management Coalition. I believe our contract with NEMCO is about $15,000 a year in that neighborhood. And we had $20,000 budgeted just for other costs that may come up. But we're just reducing it down to the exact contract amount.
Councilmember Danuski.
I don't have a comment necessarily on the cuts, but up in the budget adjustment section, I'm wondering if we can do the $100,000 Public Workshop acquisition out of Strategic Ops instead of general fund since that is kind of a, you know, this is a one-time, starting up a new, a new site and everything seems to fit to me, Strategic Ops.
Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, I actually had a question on that as well. So wasn't that included in the $6.5 million that we had for, for the creation of the public work? So how is there an extra $100,000 there?
Yes, it was in the $6.5 million. But you may recall, we're paying for that with debt. And that wasn't going to, that debt wasn't, wasn't going to be issued. And we weren't going to be making debt service payments on that until 2021. So from a cash flow standpoint, I actually... And this was late in the game on my part. And I apologize. I should have thought of this months ago. But I, I realized that we needed this funding. And the other thing is, had we not done all these other cuts, it's probably something I could have just absorbed in the budget and not come to you for. I could have, for example, I could have used some of that street consulting services for this. But given how tight the budget's going to be after all these cuts, I needed to call it out.
So can, I would ask, so you said the Strategic Ops Fund? And I, I would say that would be fine. What, what I'd recommend, though, if we're going to do that, is then that we just reimburse that back into the Strategic Ops Fund.
Makes sense.
And so I would be okay with that. And I do have one other thing on the Arch. So I know we talked about move it to the general fund. And this is actually addressing just the increase, not the, the originally plant, historical amount, whatever you want to call it. And so I, I would recommend we eliminate the increase. We stick with the $30,000 a year. And instead of doubling it, and take it out of Strategic Ops, but also take it out of the general fund budget. And actually, I'd make the motion because I think we need to cut costs.
Councilmember Smith, can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
I'd make the motion that we cut the Arch capital contribution from 60, take the $60,000 out, which was the doubling of the contribution from the city to Arch.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second discussion. Councilmember Danuski.
So I'm, I did read everything that the city manager provided on Arch. And it looks like maybe we're not low, we're, you know, maybe not quite mid-pack. I guess I'm uncomfortable doubling it when we're trying to cut things. But I don't know if I want to cut it all out either. So that's kind of where I am. And I can't quite figure out what the happy path of maybe if we only put $10,000 extra a year in or something like that. But Arch is important and we are a little, I think, from what I'm reading, we're a little low.
Councilmember Shrevnik.
Yeah, I had exactly the same response after reading the materials from the city manager. I mean, it looked like we were at 1.33, which is definitely at the low end per capita, I think it was. But if we double it, we'll definitely be at the high end per capita. So it...
No, I think if we double it, well, if we double it, we'll be in the middle of the pack. Yeah, the median was 264. So I'd put it at 266.
Okay, then I...
So I'd put it just a smidge above median. But my own opinion, if I may, is I don't think per capita is the best gauge for this because affordability, tax base, those things need to be... You know, where much is given, much is expected. And there are other cities that are a lot more well-endowed than we are. And have much higher housing costs than we do.
Councilmember Smith.
So that's the point I was going to add during the discussion on the motion is that if you do look at the data that was sent, and we are higher than a number of peer cities in the contribution on a per capita basis. And yet, we are at the, the very low end of where rents are for these cities that are included in it. And I just think that, that, that has to be a factor in this. It, you know, to look at the cap, the per capita expense for Bellevue versus, or Redmond versus Kenmore, it's just not an apples-to-apples comparison.
Anybody else want to speak on this? Councilmember Curtis.
Just a question. Where did the extra $60,000 come from? Was it just to bring us up into the middle of the pack?
Yes. Well, actually, I didn't know that it was going to bring us up into the middle of the pack. I just knew that there was a great need. And I was getting a lot of, not pressure, but a lot of requests from the affordable housing world. And they actually wanted me to increase it by tenfold. So I, my recommendation was to increase it by twofold.
Another comment. I, I also would feel comfortable doing something kind of in between. Increasing it some, but maybe not to the $60,000 level.
Councilmember Danuski.
In some of the information you provided us, there was a portion of it that's CDBG related. How much, is that something that's stable? Because the number kind of went all over the place in the charts. So I didn't quite understand how the $30,000 plus of CDBG gets us where we are.
I'm happy to address that. Several years ago, the portion of CDBG that, that comes to the broader county and Kenmore is part of the consortium that, that is eligible to use those funds and deliberate in how they're apportioned. The consortium agreed that, that a chunk of those funds that come in every year should be directed toward Arch. And so that's where that, that money comes from. I can't, I can't recall what the exact percentage is, but there's a percentage of the, of the annual...
Is it a consistent percentage that we always just funnel towards Arch?
Yeah, it's, it's not like, you know, that could change depending on, on the actions of the, of the overall consortium leadership. But this is, this has been in place for, for several years. And so as the, as the overall award to the consortium goes up and, up and down, that, that does provide a little bit of variability with that. But this, this consortium not only has several of the Arch member cities, the ones who aren't, you know, who don't have their own amount coming directly to them, which is based on population. It's not only some of the suburban cities of, of our size, but it's, it's also rural cities who, who compete for those funds too. Like, and it's often for like water systems or, or other utilities. So, you know, it's, it's a dynamic within that consortium. But, but for several years, it, it has been stable. And, and I think a very appropriate percentage of, of that being directed toward affordable housing in the, in the suburban cities who are part of that consortium. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis.
I just wanted to add a few general comments. Since I missed the party last week. Turned out two weeks ago, when I was here with crutches, I thought I had just had a hip injury and it turned out to be a fracture. So last week, I was still sleeping 18 hours a day. And I just could not make it to the meeting last night. But I will say that clearly from the discussion that was, that occurred last time, some good analysis occurred. A lot more data was gathered by going back to your different departments and finding out a few details on each of these. And I think it led to the discussion we're having tonight. So I think it was a productive week, even if I missed it. And then it seems like, the other thing at the high level, the 1 through 18, the, the things we need or we could potentially change to, to balance the budget.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Curtis, I think we're, we're debating the motion right now.
You're right.
Councilmember's motion, so...
I got sidetracked.
Okay, no, it's fine. I just want to keep us aimed in our direction. Do you have any more discussion on Councilmember's motion? Councilmember Marshall.
Just going to say briefly, I'd be in favor of a happy medium.
So that's actually what I was just going to mention is if, maybe if we defeat the motion, maybe we can come back with a motion rather than have it amended and everything. And just a thought.
Well, I would toss out that if somebody wanted to put forward an amendment to the motion, that we might be able to knock this out relatively quickly. I'm going to speak really quickly on where I am on this motion because everybody else has had a chance to, to speak briefly. When Rob said that he had received some pressure around increasing affordable housing, it wasn't just from affordable housing folks. It was also for me on some level, I think. I think in this economy and with the housing crisis we're facing, that us being the, you know, and I know per capita isn't the best measure, but right now, we're the third lowest on this list. And that includes Bo Arts, which is giving $0. I think an increase to bring us into something, you know, I, I think the $60,000 increase is perfectly reasonable to bring us into par with, with the rest of our neighbors. But I'd be open to looking at other ways of figuring out what that par is. Do we look at assessed value? You know, do we divide it by assessed value or something like that? I'm open to other, other ways of trying to measure that. And I think assessed value might get to affordability, maybe. I'm not sure. That said, if somebody were to put out a motion to amend this motion, then I think we might be able to dispose of this relatively quickly. So are there any motions to amend?
I'd gladly amend my motion. I would amend it from eliminating the $60,000 over the biennium to, which is $30,000 a year, to $10,000 a year, which would be a total of $20,000.
Councilmember Shrevnik, okay. All right, so we've got a motion, a second to amend the, the increase to Arch from $60,000 over two years to, that's $20,000 over two years increase? Okay. Clerk, take the roll.
Councilmember Marshall.
Yes.
Councilmember Shrevnik.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
No, but symbolically.
Symbolically, symbolically?
Symbolically.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis.
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski.
Yes.
Passed.
Deputy Mayor, the material that, that you received also spoke to kind of a broader question in front of all, all the cities that belong to Arch about adjusting the parity...
Sorry, just two seconds. Clerk, so we amended, do we now need to actually vote on the motion?
Well, I think there's really nothing left of the first motion.
That's true. I just was looking at it from a mechanic standpoint.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the question. But I, I think it just is, is null and void.
Okay. Sorry, go on.
No, no problem. And we, we may want to, you know, come back to that discussion at, at a different time. And obviously, if you have any questions in the meantime, we could, we could deal with those. And we may want to have some of the Arch staff members on hand to answer questions.
Councilmember Smith and the Marshall.
On that point, so one of the things, you know, one of the graphs that our finance director showed us earlier today talked about our revenue stream and how we're so property tax dependent. And so this is a perfect example of something that for, for us as a city that's more reliant on property taxes for our general fund, it has a greater proportional impact on our citizens than it does, for instance, the city that has, you know, like Woodinville, that has five times the property, or sales tax that we have, where they have, and so that sales tax isn't impacting their residents in the way if you're going to fund something like Arch. And, and I just think this is a perfect example of, you know, the point is to help affordable housing, but it actually is, is a proportionately greater negative on our citizens.
Councilmember Marshall, did you have your hands up?
It was a Public Works question, though.
Do anything else about Arch? Okay, then why don't you ask your Public Works question?
You know, I did want to see or see if I could get any brief, and it can be totally general, but any brief pros and cons of the idea that we must acquire an entirely separate new piece of property for Public Works versus utilizing the existing Fisher property, the property by the post office and, and City Hall? If there's a general, just a general pro and con of it? Yeah, just, the main reason is it's just way too small. We've, we've done the analysis. We need about an acre and a half minimum. And temporarily, we're squeezing on to half an acre plus the backside of the post office. Also, I, from a land use, downtown land use standing, standpoint, I don't think your long-term policy...
policy is to have a public workshop right there in the heart of your downtown.
Okay, Councilmember Danuski.
And just kind of going back to the strategic ops, did we decide to put the hundred thousand in strategic ops? I know.
No, we haven't made a decision with that yet.
Would you like me to make a motion to that effect?
Sure.
To make it official? So I would move that for the fourth item on the budget adjustment for the public workshop acquisition, that that be funded from the special, or the strategic opportunities funds, fund, and that it be reimbursed on the debt that the Public Works has already been working towards on the project. That was rather convoluted, but if you, I think maybe you know what I was trying to say.
I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, take the roll.
Councilmember Curtis.
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall.
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski.
Yes.
Passed.
Councilmember Smith.
Question on the new part-time rec coordinator. And I don't, if I'm going down the wrong path, just tell me right away. But is that basically because it was approved last week, is that off the table then from a funding discussion?
So I had a conversation earlier today with the city clerk about this. If we were to revisit that, we would be, the correct motion would be to rescind the previous motion made two weeks ago. And rescinding a motion, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kelly, that rescinding a motion requires either public notice, so letting us know like at last week's meeting that we're going to bring it up, or a super majority of folks to just open discussion. Is that correct?
I think anybody can open the discussion or rescind the motion at any time, but without the notice, then it needs a two-thirds vote.
To pass the rescension motion?
Right.
Okay. So yes, there is a, we can have the discussion.
So then on that point, and I really, I don't, I'm not trying to be difficult here, but because we have significant budget issues that we're trying to work through, is there any way to revisit whether or not we can actually not go forward with that position? And I realize I was on the losing end of that vote, so I don't want to be insensitive to the fact if, you know, if that's inappropriate, just slap my hand and tell me.
I don't think it's inappropriate, but my informal vote count tells me that I don't think the votes are there for your motion. So, I mean, if you want to make it, well, we can entertain it, but.
Well, then I would make a motion that we revisit that since we're revisiting everything else on here, and that's the part-time rec coordinator.
So the motion would be to rescind the addition of the part-time rec coordinator to the budget. To rescind the motion to add that, that was, that we voted on two weeks ago, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That would be the motion.
Do we have a second? Okay, for lack of a second, the motion dies. Councilmember Curtis, Councilmember Shrubnik.
So back to my out-of-order comments, they're still valid. So it seems like the cuts in the bottom section are dependent on the big changes we're making now on the top section. And I don't know if we have actually decided or at what point we do decide to do a one percent, a three percent, or pick something in between. So that's the single biggest item that would make the biggest change and require the least of these other cuts down below. Now, I actually like some of these cuts below. I really think we should do them, even if we get a balanced budget, by changing the tax rate or the taxes. So I don't quite remember where we're at in that piece of the discussion. Have we already decided one percent, three percent, or are we still off potentially an in-betweeny two percent?
I think that's the discussion we're having. I believe we'll be voting on the tax rate, is that next week? So that's the discussion we're having now, so.
And we'd love your direction.
Mr. Gregory knows what, knows what bill to bring before us.
Okay, because my general thought is, I think we do need to use some of the bank capacity. I think we need to be very careful how we spend our citizens' money, but we really don't want to get in the position where we say, oh, my goodness, now we're in trouble, we need five percent of the bank capacity. I would much rather see an incremental, gentle increase. And I think we're still in a place where we can have some serious budget discussions over this next year or two and say, there's something fundamentally broken, how can we address that? Are there other options? So I think for this biennium, I guess I would like to see us consider, because I think we can make enough cuts on the bottom with the changes that we've just made in saving a hundred and twenty thousand, that I think the two percent might get us to that balanced budget position. Without numbers, I'm not sure the answer to that.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Well, that wasn't exactly what I was going to bring up, but now I have two questions. One is that I think there were a couple of things that we didn't resolve, and one was on the moving of the arts fund, the concerts and movies. So that was one. And then, and I don't have strong feelings either way, like I said, my preference would be to do what you're proposing here. But then the other one that I do have feelings about is, I think Councilmember Smith and Curtis both mentioned the number one. And that's the only one on here that, I mean, technically it represents a foregone increase, but it also represents technically kind of almost like a reduction in service, because it sounds like because we have such a burgeoning incubator, we have more people using the same amount of consultations, so we have kind of this decline in service. And we're trying, this ten thousand to me kind of represents trying to keep it the same. So that's the one thing on here I'm hoping we can retain or add. I'm not sure how you're thinking about it, but I'd like to, and I do agree, we should look at the fee structure to see if it can make up at least some of that. And my overarching comment now that I didn't have a minute ago was, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the five fifty-nine is the, no, maybe it isn't. I was going to say it's the difference. Never mind, just forget where I was going with that.
So I'm going to propose something really quickly, just to try to move this along, because we've had a good discussion going back and forth, but I think we actually need to start ticking through things. Okay, well, what I would propose is that we just quickly do some thumbs up, thumbs down on one through eighteen. We've had a chance to discuss them all a bit, and if we have more questions, we can bring those up as we get to them. But I think that will give us an idea, once we have an idea of what we're actually willing to cut, that will help the discussion on exactly, on the property tax and other things too. So I'm just going to go down, and if you have questions, raise them. If not, just thumbs up or thumbs down. So number one, eliminate the increase in incubator services due to increase in clients.
Thumbs down means we're not.
Yeah, means you're not in favor of doing the cut.
Take that one off.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so that one stays. I mean, that one goes away, sorry. Okay, just making sure I'm seeing that right. Transition incubator to separate independent nonprofit by 2020. Okay, that one's in. Hang on, I just need to make sure I mark these correctly. Number three, bring Hangar Town Square post office property management in-house. Just going to try to keep a running total too of where we are.
It might be real easy once you get to the bottom. I would just go through the list first.
Yeah. Number four, bring landscape maintenance in-house, assuming we have five maintenance workers. Okay. Office furniture replacement. Okay. The no there was Councilmember Danuski. Not to call you out in particular, but you're the only no.
That's fine.
Just throwing you under the bus.
We don't want people to be sitting in chairs that are broken for the next two years if we don't need to.
Street banners. Okay, that's a yes. Dump fees. Okay. Traffic model in-house. Reduce downtown Lake Point traffic engineering by fifty thousand dollars. Okay. Reduce, Public Works reduce consulting services for streets. That's a yes. Reach jail budget to meet with the model. Okay. Move the phone system expense into equipment replacement. Okay, that's a yes. Have SWEM pay for twenty-five percent of the GIS costs. Looks like that's a yes from Councilmember Marshall. You're no? Keep saying it? Okay. Well, that's a majority yes. Error and overbudgeting benefits in the city clerk's office. Yes, okay. Use the, allocate the King County levy proceeds that are not currently allocated for parks. Okay, we've got one no with Councilmember Curtis. Other than that, it's a yes. Use the one percent to fund concerts and movies. Okay, me and Councilmember Smith are no's, but that one passes. Include, move over the park impact fee update to the community manage existing contract and reduce other services line item in the community development department. It's a yes all around. And reduce funding above NIMCO contract amount. Okay. So going through that list, everything passed except, you're correct, Councilmember Curtis. Everything passed.
That was my prediction, so I can subtract one item from the total easier than I can have all.
So it's five hundred and, oh, yeah, five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars saved right there. Did staff get all of those?
So I have a question on.
Yeah, Councilmember Smith.
So I got from our finance director, we had approved recently the HRA VIBA reimbursement on the employees' non-reimbursable deductible.
Is your mic on over there?
Pardon?
Is your mic on?
Yes, it is.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, I'll speak louder.
It's okay.
And so, and we, and it was twenty-eight thousand a year. And since we haven't been through a budget cycle yet on this issue after it was approved, I would like to make a motion that we eliminate paying for this. I think as a city function, our staff is very well paid, and I don't think we need to be paying their deductibles as well.
Okay, we have a motion.
I think I need you to, what was?
This is for the HRA VIBA. It's the health reimbursement account that is set up, that the city funds a portion of the employees' deductible.
Is this on the high deductible plan?
We recently went to a higher deductible. And so to help make up for the higher deductible, the city contributes to a health savings account.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll think of that.
Okay, we have a motion second, any discussion? Councilmember Curtis.
So I know in comparing, the only place I've worked for a really long time was Evergreen, but it feels like the city of Kenmore's benefits is above and beyond what I had come to expect in that different realm. And I believe that actually if people have to pay some deductible, not too painful, but enough, I think there's a little bit of buy-in. And so I expect when I go to see a specialist or see my primary care doctor, now certain things that are free, and that's the goal of the incentive incentivization that's around healthcare nowadays, the stuff that's most preventive is going to save you the most money, it's free. There is no deductible. So it's not going to affect those things. It's some of those other things that are a little more optional. And to have somebody pay, you know, ten dollars, some of mine's ten, some's thirty, I don't know what ours amounts to, but I think there's reason to have people responsible for that deductible.
Councilmember Smith.
I agree with what Councilmember Curtis said, and I'd also say that, you know, this is shared sacrifice for everything we're talking about tonight. And it's an example of whether it's increasing, no matter what, we know we're increasing taxes, but our staff does have good benefits, they're getting good raises, there are some positions that are getting exceptionally good raises. And I don't think that our benefit package in any way lacks compared to a lot of other comparable cities. And I think to, for us to do this at the citizen, at our own citizens' expense, I just think it sends the wrong message, and I don't think it's the right way to approach how we want to set expectations. I just, you know, you're not going to find this very often in the private sector, and I think it's reasonable that we need to reevaluate it. And since it just started, I think now is an appropriate time. We didn't know what the numbers were. And so, and I asked a guy, and I got, received them, and it was about twenty-eight thousand this year. I think that's an area we can cut that makes sense. And yes, it's going to cost something to the employees, but they still have, they're very well compensated. And this is, this was, I considered almost like a bonus on top of everything anyway.
Councilmember Marshall.
And how long had the program been in effect thus far?
Two thousand and eighteen was the first year. That's when we went to the health plan with the higher deductible and higher out-of-pocket costs.
And when did it begin in eighteen? January?
January first.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yeah, just can you refresh our memories a little bit about, you know, what, give us a little bit of a flavor of, you know, what the out-of-pockets are and how much they were increased and what we were trying to offset? Because I don't think it went to zero out-of-pocket, if I'm remembering. I mean, you're not covering all out-of-pocket expenses.
No. We went from a zero deductible health plan to a health plan with a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar deductible for a single individual, up to a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar deductible for a family. So if you were single, your deductible was two-fifty. If you were a full family, it was seven-fifty. The potential out-of-pocket went up to, I believe, ten thousand dollars for a full family. Jennifer was on the committee with me. Two thousand and... Went to three and ten. Right. So the potential out-of-pocket, which is what you could pay when you add up all of the non-covered expenses and the deductibles and the coinsurances, went up quite a lot. So in an attempt to ease that transition for the employees, we requested, and it was approved, to offer a health reimbursement arrangement, which is an account set up for each employee that the city then provided funding. And for each single employee, we funded four-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year, and for a full family, one-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year. And then for an employee plus one, it was nine-hundred dollars a year. So it did cover at least the deductibles and then some additional out-of-pocket costs if all of those were incurred within that year. We do something different for the high deductible accounts. We have a few folks that are on a high deductible medical insurance, and that saves the city considerable amount of money. And we contribute to a health savings account for those individuals. City, even with those contributions, what the city saves on the premiums is greater. And those are topics that I was going to bring to you next week for consideration.
So I guess I would ask, if we want to, if we're going to be discussing this next week, do we want to discuss this next week, or do we want to dispose of this motion? I don't mean dispose in a negative way.
My position won't change, and I guess there's a motion on the table, so it'd be up to.
There is.
Individuals, how you want to treat it.
Councilmember Curtis.
I can't remember the proper way to do that, but delay it until next week's discussion and finish the voting then.
We could, Kelly, could we table this until next week? Is that legal? Thank you. Okay, so the chair would entertain a motion to table, uh, Councilmember Smith's motion until, um, next Monday's meeting.
Do we need a second for that motion?
Uh, I'm entertaining a motion, I just want me to make the motion.
I will make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Our Tuesday, Tuesday's meeting.
Sorry, next Tuesday's meeting, thank you. All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second, there's no, there's no discussion. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion passes, we will revisit Councilmember Smith's motion next Tuesday.
Councilmember Smith, you are a no.
All right. So according to my math. We have just made five-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars worth of cuts, and right now our potential budget adjustments stands at four-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. That is with the property tax rate at 1%. With keeping the part-time recreation coordinator, with changing the arch capital contribution to twenty thousand dollars over two years, and moving the public works acquisition over to strategic opportunities, just so we're on the same page of where we are, um, so far. Are there any other pieces that we want to discuss? Councilmember Curtis?
Is anybody else interested in looking at the 2% as an option to 1 and 3? If, if not, since I kind of missed last week, um, I'm willing to not bother and go there.
I mean, I'll be honest, I'm open to, to talking about it too. I think our willingness to, um, you know, we're talking about a twelve or fifteen dollar difference for the, for the average person at 2%, we're talking probably, you know, six, seven dollars over the year. But I think in the long term, um, if we wait for the economy to turn, to, to, to take a downturn, our political willingness to, to take the property tax will be almost zero at that point. And we're, we will be kind of tying our own hands, um, at some level, so. I'm open to that discussion if other folks are, Councilmember Schubnick?
I, I would prefer that we, we stick with the, the 1% at this point and, and open up the discussion as we, I think we were, have been talking about, um, the broader discussion of the revenue streams and, and having that discussion with the public, rather than kind of jumping the gun on this particular mechanism for increasing revenue. But yeah, I am a little worried about, um, potential downturns as well, um, but I, I think it needs to be part of the, the broader conversation.
Councilmember, uh, Danuski?
Yeah, I'm actually comfortable with the 3%, but if people want to talk about 2, I'm willing to look at that as well.
So I'm hearing three folks who are willing to talk about 2%. I think the only person I haven't heard from is Councilmember Marshall.
I'm open-minded.
Does anybody want to make a motion? Or?
I'll make a motion that, uh, we have staff analyze 2% and bring it to discussion next week.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. Do we have any discussion? Councilmember Schubnick?
So can, can we underscore what I think, um, Councilmember Herbig said earlier, which is, I believe, we've just cut five-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand. From the proposed additional cuts. So we're no longer, I mean, we're, we're basically cutting almost all of the recommendations. So I'm, I'm struggling with what would be the rationale for considering something over 1%. Am I missing something?
I think it's, oh, I'm just speaking for myself, I think it could be, um, the compounding effect that happens over years, um, because that 1%, then you add another 1% to it, you get 1% of that 1%, it, it does compound over time. Which does lead to additional, uh, revenues as we inevitably face some sort of shortfall, um, you know, a budget issue. Councilmember Curtis?
I think my thought for wanting more than the 1% is, as we look at the long-term structure of cities that are built like us, we will have problems. You know, the, the, eh, ex, the amount that expenditures in our employees and everything else goes up more than 1%. So I think looking ahead, we're going to, I think, eventually need some of that bank capacity, and I'd rather take it in little teeny bits instead of getting in trouble and need big, big bites.
Councilmember Smith?
So, I guess I would make the argument that. By, by being resistant as a council, as a body, to looking at just accepting a 3% increase. We were brought over a half million in cuts we could do, that, yeah, there are some impacts that would be felt, um, but they're not, they're not massive. And it, and it just, I, my point is that if you operate on a stricter budget, you're more out to create a leaner budget and services that is more what we really want. Because we talked about some things just tonight that we hadn't talked about before. And so I would say, um, if we don't need to take it, we just shouldn't take it, and we just, we don't need to. I would say if, if, if there's one area that probably could, uh, make a difference, it would be on the, the, uh, have to do with the pavement study and some things we could do there. But, um, that wasn't even part of the discussion tonight, but that would be the one, if I were to look at like one area that's kind of outside the box a little bit, maybe that's the one. And, um, but, so I, I would not support wanting to look at 2%.
Councilmember Curtis?
I would say to just say we want to raise more money for the sake of raising money, we'll figure out how to spend it, is not the approach we want. So we want to produce a balanced budget, so if we did any kind of a tax levy increase, we'd want to say the money is going here. And, and I know we've talked about pavement as being a major deficit, and we haven't addressed it as much as we would have liked.
Yeah, um, if I may.
Yes.
If, if you adopt a 2% or a 3%, and there's a little bit extra in the budget, then I would recommend that that goes straight to crack ceiling and slurry ceiling. The, the sooner we can be doing crack ceiling and slurry ceiling, the better it's going to pay off later.
Because we're, we're underfunding our maintenance of.
Yeah.
By about two million dollars or something, is that?
Yep, and you saw that pavement deterioration curve in my city manager budget message, and once a road gets about eight years old, it exponentially just declines in, in quality. And so the sooner you can be crack ceiling and chip, and chip ceiling and slurry ceiling, actually, I better take out chip ceiling because we're too good for chip ceiling around here. But crack ceiling and slurry ceiling, um, uh, the more, the sooner you can be doing that, the, the longer you can be extending the life, life of your road.
Councilmember Curtis?
I sort of have another general comment. We cut five-hundred thousand dollars. Sorry. It's time for medicine.
Deputy Mayor, we have the motion on the floor, I just want to remind you.
Oh, yes, thank you. Um, although I think this is germane because we're talking about what the money may go towards.
So, so we've cut this, but there will be consequences. This is, it's, it's a lot of work to cut this many things in a staff that's already been budget-conscious over the last several bienniums. So to take that kind of a staff and say, we're going to cut five-hundred thousand and think there won't be some consequence, what I would predict upfront would be there will be very little left over at the end of the year. Usually we budget very conservatively, and we're really happy and proud of that, but this, this really, really tight budget will probably change that. We'll either be lucky to squeak by, or we might even be a little bit, uh, you know, overspent. So granted, we have to approve that as we go, but, but, but there will be consequences to cutting five-hundred thousand dollars from a budget.
Yes.
Yeah, we had this discussion at the retreat, and I actually brought it up. I, I suggested that more precision budget, budgeting can extend the lines out further. The direction I got from you was not to do precision budget, budgeting or as much, and, and budget conservatively so that we can. So we can have those differences, those positive differences at the end of the year.
All right. Councilmember Curtis?
I guess the question then is, do we need the street discussion to come back around if we're going to look at, so the motion is, are we going to consider 2%?
That's the motion, yes.
So where's the money going to go if we come up producing a, a balanced budget plus some extra money? So do we need to officially revisit that next week when we come back and discuss things?
Yeah, we need your direction on it, so you got a couple of options. One is you can, uh, just strengthen your ending fund balance with it, or, um, you can put it in, um, streets like I was suggesting, or you can put it in some other program that you may wish me to fund.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Any further discussion on the motion to discuss 2% next week? Clerk, take the roll.
Councilmember Schubnick?
I'm going to abstain since I won't be here next week. Sorry.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Pass.
So we'll have two options to look at next week, is that the direction you're, you're getting? Okay. Councilmember Curtis?
I'd like to propose another motion, that, um, as you balance the budget with this extra information, that any extra funds be dedicated toward the street fund.
And I'll second that. Got a motion, a second, do we have any discussion? Councilmember Danuski?
I guess I haven't seen enough data to know that we want all that money to go to the street fund for the, um, crack ceiling and, and all that. I, I would want a good chunk of it, but I don't know about the word "all." I'm hesitating a bit, just because there may, might be some other, you know, fund padding and, I don't know, something always pops up, so.
Councilmember Schubnick?
And I guess if you're going to do it, I, I would want to see it go to the, to, um, the street maintenance as well. I mean, we're down in the millions, and this is in the fifty-thousand-dollar range. I mean, it's next to nothing, so I, it's, uh, we really, we need a, a better fix than this. I, I don't know that this is the mechanism to, to fund that, but, um, it wouldn't, I suppose it wouldn't hurt to start somewhere with that.
Councilmember Smith?
Could you repeat the motion specifically?
That the staff, as they look at the 2% and the 3%, so give us options, that any extra money produced, instead of going into general fund, goes specifically toward the street fund.
Extra money over.
They have to, they have to have a create, create a balanced budget. So if we have taken all these expenses away and we add even 2%, there will be extra money, they won't ballot, but in the good direction. We will have too much money that we have to figure out what to do with.
So, and?
So my proposal is to use that money for a dedicated reason, instead of just say it'll go to the general fund.
And are you saying after they've gone through and, and gone through the annual budget, that you, you're taking the difference after the actual cost?
So I'm saying till next week when we have the discussion, 2%, 1%, 2%, 3%, then the council will make some decision, and that will determine then what is the deficit or extra money, that what do, do the extra money? That's the question.
Okay. Okay, I, I see what you're saying. I would, um, I would rather us have the discussion first and at least know what, what we're talking about as far as numbers-wise before I could commit.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can get those numbers, and they're pretty easy to calculate right now. I mean, like that two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, if you did a 2%, you just knock that down to a hundred-and-fifty grand. And so your, the addition, the additional money needed would be, uh, one-fifty plus a hundred park recreation coordinator plus twenty for arch. So that's two-seventy, right?
I guess part of my point is like, for instance, the HRA VIBA discussion, we didn't, we, that's supposed to be discussed next week, so I don't know where that would fall in. That's not on this list, but that could be a savings, that could be a savings that could go into this fund. So would that also be, that, that's what I'm trying to understand. It seems that, I feel like I'm putting the cart before the horse without understanding what we're trying to put in there. So that it's.
So I guess my rationale was, if we're taking income from our citizens, it just feels wrong to me just to say, we'll just take money. Okay, we've produced such a wonderfully balanced budget by getting rid of all the, by doing all these cuts, let's just take more money than we need. But that's not really the case. We have a huge need, and it's a street fund. So I would like any ex, what looks like extra money to be a dedicated instead of just evaporating. Yes. Maybe that's a more clear way to say it.
Not sure if I fully understand exactly where we're on this right now, because beyond the 1%, we also have the cuts we've made, and we also have the changes we've made in the budget adjustments. So there's more than just whether we're doing the 1%, or the 2%, or the 3%, there's all the other changes now, they all come together. So that's where my confusion lies, is exactly what Councilmember Curtis is pushing for. Rob?
Well, so I just ran the numbers, so not talking about the HRA VIBA right now, but if, uh, everything you've changed tonight, um, or kept in or kept out, uh, what it will result in is a net positive of two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand.
Is that with the 1% or with the 3%?
I'm sorry, it's with the 2%.
It's with the 2%.
Yeah, so if you did a 2% each year, uh, and all these cuts we talked about, and the rec coordinator, and arch change, you'd have a, a net of two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand to the positive.
For the biennium?
For the biennium.
It is an increase of about a quarter of what we're spending on street upkeep right now. Give or take. All right, so we've got a, we have a motion on the table, right? Sorry, it's been. Any further discussion? All right, clerk, take the roll. Sorry, um, the motion right now is for any additional funds beyond what is needed to balance the budget to go into the street fund, is that correct, Councilmember Curtis?
To balance the budget at the 1%?
No. So to balance the budget with whatever we decide next week. It might be 1%, it might be 2%, it might be 3%.
Any excess.
Whatever we decide, the extra funds generated.
Yeah, I think what he's arguing is, is that instead of increasing fund balances, which are all fairly healthy at this point, to put the new, any new revenues into the street fund, is that correct? Okay, so is that clear to everybody? Fund balances would stay flat, additional money goes in the street. Okay, that's the motion. Let's take the roll.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Schubnick?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
No.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Passed.
Okay. I guess Ms. Gregor would ask, is there any more direction that we need tonight?
No, I think I have my work cut out, cut out for me.
Do you have any more midnight oil left?
A little bit left.
Is there anything else? Yeah, Councilmember Marshall?
Yeah, I guess just briefly, I, just for the council's consideration, I, I think we, we still need to look at how a, um, public works shop is going to function, at least in the short term, in the property we already own. And whether or not that can't be continued, and whether or not it's, uh, not an acceptable or potentially, potentially an acceptable resolution. And, uh, I appreciate the city manager's question about, um, the desirability or not desirability, non-desirability of having a public works shop downtown, and just point out that the 522 is an extremely busy, uh, at least along that stretch corridor that I think probably aesthetically could be, could be made to work for a public works shop. So I'm really interested in utilizing or seeing if we can utilize our existing property as opposed to buying new property for one, that's my main point.
And, and I would actually say, um, you know, I think we're going to have time to explore that as we use the new property too, because we're, unless something else. that as we use the new property, too, because we're, unless something else pops up out of the blue that our real estate agents find for, that fits our needs for public works, it's going to be a while. We're planning on being in public works for what, a year, a couple of years? So I think we'll have time to explore whether or not that actually works before we make a decision on acquiring any new property, so. Are any other comments about the budget? Okay. That was good. Staff report?
Nothing.
Beautiful. Councilmember reports and comments. Councilmember Smith?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Councilmember Marshall?
Nothing to add, thanks.
Councilmember Curtis?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Nothing.
Councilmember Danuski?
Nothing.
Okay, I just have one small thing that came up. Sound Transit has put out their, some information about how they're planning on structuring their routes as Link comes north. And let me just look at my notes really quickly, because it is, it does impact us, and it is interesting. So the plan is right now, in 2021, when Roosevelt and Northgate stations open, the current plan is to keep, is to keep the 522 running as it is now full-time, but have it terminate at either Roosevelt or Northgate instead of going all the way in downtown. So it'll connect with Link and pass people off there. The plan in 2024, once Link reaches 145th and 522 BRT starts, is that the 522 Express will continue during peak-only hours and will continue to terminate at either Roosevelt or Northgate. So that's how they're looking at restructuring our, our Sound Transit buses as Link comes online. Councilman Shrubnik?
Right, and just a point of clarification, that, that's the 522. The 312, which is Metro, basically traces the same route, and I'm not aware that that is being changed. So just, I mean, we will still have
Yeah, I actually had a, I emailed somebody at King County, and they sent me something. Let me see if I can find it really quickly. It was actually discussing that, because people were, I'd had some of the folks in the public asking me about, let me see if I can, I've got it right here. Let me just open the attachment. I can forward this over to you guys, but it was somewhat bureaucratic. So I was asking specifically about metro service continuing and serving 61st in particular. And they said, even with Sound Transit's SR 522 and Northeast 145th Street BRT project, Metro will continue to provide service along the corridor, the 372 and other routes will continue to operate and will serve additional bus stops beyond what Sound Transit will serve. However, there may be some stop consolidation of metro stops along the corridor where they are relatively close together, and retaining those stops could have a negative impact on the speed and reliability of service in the corridor. Approximately two years prior to Northgate-Link opening in 2021, Metro will start planning how they're going to restructure some of their routes on the 522 corridor. So next year, they're going to start doing that work. And then again, approximately two years prior to 522, Northeast 145th BRT opening and Linwood-Link opening in 2024, so in 2022, they'll review its service on the corridor again and could realign some of its services to better connect riders with BRT and Link services. Both these planning efforts will include substantial metro-led public outreach efforts. We will continue to, we will continue, we look forward to working with King County and other communities, blah, blah, blah. So there will be restructuring happening. The one thing I would say is that with Metro's looking at BRT, I, who was I talking, I had a presentation, I think last week at Seashore, about Metro's rapid ride, and there, there is plans, there are plans for rapid ride-along, which would essentially replace, I think, the 312, if I'm correct. And I, no, 372. I don't, I'm a little fuzzy right now. But either way, when that goes in, their definitions for what a, for correct stop distance is a little different from Sound Transit's. It's about a half mile, and I did, I did a quick look, and the difference, the distance between 61st and 68th is .6 miles. So I believe that there's no reason to think that they would pick one or the other, they would probably keep both of those going forward. And that's something we will discuss and push for as things progress, so. Anyway, just thought you'd all appreciate that update. There's nothing more to come before us. We are adjourned.